Okay. I'd like to call the Board of Education Business meeting for Thursday, April 18th, to order at 6:05. Would everybody please stand with a pledge?
Good evening, Assistant to the right of the United States of America and to your Republic where you stand, one nation, united, in this world, with a ready-made justice for all.
Michelle, floor of earth.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser, here. Assistant Assistant to my board's board.
Here.
Kathy Moskowitz, you're in the morning.
Here.
There you go.
Here.
Thank you.
And the exits are to your right and to your left and behind us to the right if there's an emergency that happens during this. Subject 2 dot 1, may I please get a motion that after review of the Board of Education business agenda as presented and or amended at this meeting? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject 3 dot 1, may I please get a motion to accept the minutes of the March 11th, 2024 business meeting as presented? Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject 4 dot 1, statements and presentations for the Board of Education. I'll hand up this for then.
Good evening, Board of Education. At this time, I would like to invite out Assistant Assistant to the Board for Business Camp and Row. We will be presenting on the 24-25 school budget, which is on tonight's agenda for adoption.
Good evening. Right.
Now.
Good evening. Thank you for permitting me to present this evening. The budget process started back in December with the development of divisions and goals for the new year. After several board committee meetings and workshops, we're here tonight to adopt the 24-25 school a year budget. There are several things that remain unknown. The school-related personnel contract is under negotiations. We are not, we do not have the cooperative transportation request pricing. Rockland and Punden know that West Just Abosi Services costs are to remain unknown. And the big item remains state aid runs. We understand that they are conceptually is an agreement, but nothing has been finalized.
It's my understanding, I read today, that they're expecting to finalize the budget potentially on the 22nd, which is after all school districts across the state must have their credits final.
It's 24, it's 54 pages.
I know it was only extended to Monday, so, because they're hoping that that gets approved by Monday with the pass orders, then it's postponed.
So when we look at the review, the expenditure side of the budget, we've discussed these additions that came from the departments and were reviewed by the committees and the workshops. We also had these larger items added to the budget to support instructional needs with additions to special ed, nursing services, enrollment, placements, related services, and to facilitate proper placement, special ed routes, and also, again, this year, special aid fund transfer to support summer school. So the additions come to $1,176,000. When we break down what the budget looks like with reference to general support, which would be administration and buildings and grounds, we have a slight increase with reference to instruction. This represents the increase that we just looked at of 5%. Transportation has an increase of 8% across their entire budget. We've been able to reduce community services through allocating summer enrichment programs to the title grants. And then the undistributed is benefits, and we have a small increase there, so that the total budget increase is $1,093,000. With reference to revenues, we have the state aid runs, which remain unknown. We have one-time purchases that we'll look at once we know what the state aid runs are. We will continue to use reserves for ES retirement payment, our capital reserve, to cover school buses, which have been approved by the voters, our debt reserve to offset the capital renovation at the elementary school. We have higher than expected interest rates, so that would also be compensate for the loss in aid. And then we have unassigned fund balance that we appropriate every year. So we continue to monitor revenues. State aid, we've allocated here with a flat foundation aid. The tax levy, we've held at 2.25. We have a fund balance increase to cover the lack of increase in state aid. And then again, we have the ERS, the capital for the bus purchases, the debt reserve, the interest earnings to offset our expenses. And then we have other revenues, which is the high-cost aid reimbursement that we're receiving from the high schools. So our total revenue and expense budget is $29,190,000.
So the state aid number is slightly decreased, but that's because that includes more than just a foundation aid.
Yes.
Abosi's aid, transportation aid, et cetera. So we are expecting a slight decrease in things other than foundation aid. The foundation aid, what we're hearing from the state, the message from the state, including from Governor Hopeless earlier this week, is that they, that the foundation aid can expect it to remain flat. So that's where we're assuming a flat foundation aid. We'll see if it actually happens to find a budget where the overall state aid includes more than foundation aid.
So we have a tax levy increase of 2.25. The Greenwood Lake School District and the Board continues their commitment to keep the taxes increases to a minimum. With that in mind, the Board's adopting a budget with a 2.25 tax levy increase, well below the tax levy limit of 4.27. So the average cost to the homeowner is $112,71 increase over the whole year. And then we have a capital projects, an exception project that's budget neutral because the money would be coming from an old capital project that hasn't been exhausted, and we'd like to repair the elevator in this building with those funds. Our next steps are the public hearing on May 14th, and then the budget vote and election of board members on May 21st. Thank you.
Questions at all from the board?
No. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to launch principal reports. We have Principal Conley here on the elementary school to speak about how things are going out this month.
Good evening.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. This month at the elementary school is all about the love of reading. Edna Oerfield and our One Book One School Committee have kicked off a whole school reading of a book called Eight Class Pets Plus One Squirrel Plus One Dog Equals Chaos by Vivian Van de Beeld. And each weeknight, students and their families are reading a specific section of the book. And then during the school day, teachers are using the text to make connections to grade-level learning, and these are happening in many fun and creative ways. There are daily trivia questions, choice board activities, and school-wide search for our new friend, which is the squirrel. The events run through April 24th and will conclude with a Dress Like Your Class Pet Day and a whole school animal assembly. I'd like to thank Edna and the entire One Book One School Committee for all the extra effort they have put into creating resources and making this such an exciting bonding event for our students and their families. And you see the pictures on the, on the overhead of families just really enjoying reading together, which is the goal. Next, after rescheduling twice due to rain, our 3K and kindergarten students paired up with third-grade buddies to take a walking trip to the community garden on Poplar Street to plant this year's crop of pea plants. Students will learn about how a piece of their labor will create a resilient local food source, bring the lake and the surrounding communities. Grow local room with lake provides, providing pea seeds, planting soil, and grow cups for each student so they can plant, grow, and observe the life cycle of a pea plant. And this activity links directly with New York State Next Gen Standards that call for kindergarten students to learn about what plants need to survive and grow, and grade three students to learn about interdependent relationships of organisms and their environment. So thank you to Chad, Billy, Ari, and the volunteers at the community garden for providing these materials and extending the invitation for this collaborative hands-on learning experience. Other opportunities for hands-on learning come from our district-sponsored field trips, many of which are happening this month. This past Monday, second graders enjoyed a day at the Stony Hill Environmental Center, and upcoming trips are scheduled to the Orange County Arboretum and Legoland. Partaking in such trips greatly expands our students' background knowledge, and our kids really look forward to that. I'd like to thank the Board for continued support of these unique days of learning outside the classroom. And also, learning outside the classroom is our ES data team, who met on April 12th to review whole school data following the completion of spring benchmarks and the end of the third marking period. This team will work with Lena Polczynski, Rob Dever, and Marty to use insight from the data to guide instruction for the final quarter and identify resources and areas for curricular enhancements for next year. And lastly, this month, we honor the memory of two individuals who dedicated most of their lives to the Greenwood Lake School District. Yesterday, we held a bench dedication ceremony for Janet Chatakowski, who has a 128 for us for over 30 years. And next Friday on April 26th, we will honor the life and legacy of longtime Board of Member John Finn with an Arbor Day and tree gifting ceremony with our kindergarten classes, and we hope to see you all there. That's the news from the elementary school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next day.
I will be giving the middle school report today. Mr. Gillespie is unexpectedly out, he has a family emergency, and he's been out this week. So we are working to support him, and the Minnesota team has all stepped up to pitch in. The report from the middle school this week, the, in March, we do a reading challenge, similar to March Madness with the basketball, and every home is a different team, and there's a bracket that's built, and the homes compete against each other for reading nets, and they declare their class winners and their individual winners, and so they have their party at the end, and this is the students that won the March Madness. Spring sports are underway, we have our track team, students out there running every single day, and we have softball, and we have baseball as well, and they're outside as much as they possibly can be, although the weather has not been that cooperative so far, as those of you involved in village sports and village fields know as well, it's been quite difficult to try to get practices in, and even our boys' first game, which was scheduled for May got canceled. So, virtually, we're doing the best we can, we're having some indoor practices, and hopefully the weather will be cooperating soon. And then finally, we had our National Junior Honor Society induction earlier this week for seventh and eighth graders. We had many returning eighth graders, we had some eighth graders that were new this year that did not make it last year, I believe there were five of them, and then we had a bunch of seventh graders join. It was a lovely ceremony, nothing caught fire with the candles, but the students did a wonderful job explaining the different pillars of NJHS, and as always, it was just a lovely evening celebrating these students that not only have academic success, but also show outstanding character, leadership, volunteerism, citizenship, et cetera. Good things going on. Just, I wanted to just briefly go over up to four on tonight's agenda. We have those days just coming forward down here, we just don't know what's going to happen. Before, we are looking to discuss, and I discuss potentially giving back school days because we didn't come forward those days during the course of the school year. So we do have up to four on tonight's agenda, is giving back three of those days to a new last day of school, because we don't know what's going to happen, but we are waiting now, giving back Friday, and then we do have four, so that the Monday will become a four-day one. Then we are looking at the last week of school, that we would potentially propose on the agenda, give back days, the new last day of school, then May, and Friday, to reverse the last day, so doing now and then May, this do not use that additional day, students that's holding staff, and if we do do that, everything we eat that last week would potentially stay, graduation also is still being on the board, because we then make Friday, to turn our first day of school around that, about our graduation to. Year in advance? To staff. To be here. And if we do do that, everything that's on that last week would stay, graduation would still be. Picnic day that we have, the celebration that they have to celebrate, and that all is taking place. About our graduation, we've already worked on that. Year in advance? You know, to be here, so that kind of. Any questions? That wouldn't change, that's the order that's supposed to be, the eighth grade picnic day that we have every single year, the celebration that they have to celebrate, and that all is taking place, and we do need that. We've already worked on that. Sorry, what are you committing to that in case?
Just had a workshop up on Tuesday, and.
Any questions about the give back days or?
That all gets approved in May, and the state pulls all the.
That is my presentation, please. Thank you very much.
The state aid was budget committee, audit committee, we just had a workshop up on Tuesday, and nothing, obviously Hannah's presented tonight, so that all. Policy committee approved in May, and the state pull facilities, all the, nothing? Well, we could just. We do know that the boilers were finally, everything was. Audit committee? Installed, and we're up and running on the new boilers, and the old ones. Policy committee? I think that was another. Project. Facilities? Nothing? Nothing? Well, we could just. We do know that the boilers were finally, everything was installed, and we're up and running on the new boilers, and the old ones. Where we go, just in the, I think that was another project, just now, finally complete. Add the, anything from the. Windows are two, June 6th, that would replace.
Yeah, I have a few dates that I just announced. Junior Formal is scheduled for May 23rd. Now, our machine flips, we're sent via email, and Google Doc, or Google Drive, I think, on the site. Same thing with Senior Palm, permission. I have a few dates, jobs that I just announced. Any Junior Formal is scheduled for May 23rd. Upcoming on May 4th. Over afterward, we're sending, I see, Nancy, I have a lot to register for that. I don't think though, I'm sorry. Same thing with Senior Palm, email session, to get your address out tonight, this is the last day. Any parents of state champs, or SAT, is upcoming on May 4th, over afterward. Also, any parents of state teams, there's a lot of fundraising going on, you can see our labs, I would check out their 2024 Facebook page, there are a lot of links recently posted. Track seven, over at Warwick, their Chester, there are a lot of fundraisers to raise money for this community class, especially for any parents of state members, there are a lot of fundraising going on, you can see your labs, all, try to check out their 2024 Facebook page, there are a lot of links recently posted. Track seven, over at Warwick, their Chester, there are a lot of fundraisers to raise money for this community class, especially for any parents of state members, or yard signs, for your drive to senior. You can either call Track seven, or this can post their Facebook page, or, I don't know.
Congratulations.
That's all.
Thank you. Chester? Thank you. Yeah, on October, similar things, Thursday, May 16th, Junior Palm. And May 30th, this is what I think.
I was unable to attend the last meeting. It was Larry, Bruce, and Ed running stuff. I wasn't able to go, but it was, they did a presentation, and they already kind of did a presentation of this earlier in the year, which is kind of the ramifications, legal ramifications, which are still very much. I was unable to attend the last meeting, interesting. But it's still very much, because I wasn't able to go, but it was, they did a presentation on the, and they already kind of did a presentation of that earlier in the future, but just kind of the ramifications, legal ramifications, which are still very much up in the air. AI is an interesting tool, but it's still very much in the beginning this month, so there's going to be more to come, I'm sure, there'll be plenty of trees, workshops in the future about that.
I don't see anybody from the. Does anybody have anything?
Send home fundraising, or I think they're cards that they're trying to sell, so I know their package went home with the children.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anybody. Children's backpacks, they're looking out for that. Does anybody have anything? Send you? Village of Greenwood Lake?
Send home fundraising, or I think they're cards that they're trying to sell, so I know their package went home with the children, I think that's where they were.
Subject 6 dot 1, Board of Education, floor. And yeah, but before we get to the. Village of Greenwood Lake, Board of Education, floor, I'm just going to read a skit here about what Village said and what is discussed now at these meetings, so, public comment at meetings, public expression at meetings, subject 6 dot 1, following guidelines, are intended to promote an orderly procedure. Before we get to the, the Board of Education, floor, the public will be given the opportunity to address forward regardless of interest or concern, and the privilege of four sections. Public comment at meetings, public expression at meetings, anyone wishing to refer or sign following guidelines are intended to promote an orderly procedures from public comment and part. Speakers will be asked to state their name, or the. Public will be given the opportunity to address forward regardless of items, speakers may be served during three minutes each, or section, their comments or questions. Speakers, you have the right, anyone wishing to refer or sign are to address the question prior to the start of that meeting by the way, for speakers to speak. Speakers, as stated, any specific person or, will not address it, or refer to the. Speakers may have limited time, so anybody knows comments or questions, speakers will have the right to speak without interruption, a stat member, or address, etc., or anybody that's meeting by the way, in case anybody wants to speak. Speakers will not be recognized second time, so are still on the now to speak, and will get out of order and refer to the superintendent. The Board may suspend privilege, so anybody knows, determine that continued discussion on whether that topic, student, board, a stat member, business, or anyone. One of the above guidelines are not adhered to, and speakers will not be recognized for a second time until all who wish to speak have been given the privilege of the floor. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? The Board may suspend privilege of the floor if determined that continued discussion on a particular topic will prevent the Board from completing its scheduled business, or if one of the above guidelines are not adhered to and continued participations deemed to be disstruktive. Thank you. So now, privilege of the floor. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Thank you.
Do I sign it somewhere?
Yes, I have, I'm. Bye.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank you all, and thank you for those days back. No, sorry, please. You know, when I moved here 25 years ago, I used to come to the board meetings, and I used to admire someone who used to be there and speak every single time. First and foremost, I want to thank you presently, I will not say the names, I'm not allowed to say names, but I really admired him. No, when I moved here 20 years ago, I admired him. I used to watch the board meetings, and I used to admire someone who used to be there and speak every single time.
I just want to read this one, fun is here presently, I will not say the names, I'm not allowed to say names, but I really admired him, and admired his passion, I admired him. I just have a question. I want to read, but I could look back, I plan to do a year-round process involving participation of district-level ministers, building principals, directors, coordinators, teachers, other personnel, the process to. I just have developed, I know I shouldn't laugh, but since budget planning will do a year-round process involving participation of district-level administrators, because I think building principals, directors, coordinators, and teachers, and other personnel, the process of budget planning, speed planning, and development should allow the community and projects to have numerous opportunities for public information.
That's how I would read that.
Asking questions. Because I think we've all, we're collaborating from, and generation, and that's all, I don't ever come across that I'm not appreciative, because I'm very ambitious, and I have a lot of passion for this community, just as you all do. And thank you so much. That's how I was cool, and have a great day. Asking questions, going to board meetings, and I learned from our generation before me. And that's all. If anybody else want to come across that I'm not appreciative, because I'm very ambitious, and I have a lot of passion for this community, just as you all do. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak?
Not yet.
Thank you. Please come up and sign this and stay here. Put this out, please.
Hello. My name is Melissa Delion Milligan. I have two daughters that are in this district. I have been living here for almost 20 years, and I am very passionate about our community. I love where I live. It has been brought to my attention, hello, my name is Melissa Delion Milligan, I have two daughters that are in this district, has been brought to my attention by the children. I've been living here for almost 20 years, who have pointed out that there is a lack of diversity in administration and professional staff in this district. This hurts me deeply. Our children are not being taught or able to see that people that look like them can be in administration and position of this district. Administration hurts me deeply. Our children are not being taught or able to see that people that look like them can be in a position of administration, or of people who make rules, or people that can teach. These comments that were made about the district not having the diversity hurt a child of color because they did not have a teacher throughout their years here that looked like them, and their counterpart who was white, they were the one. And their counterpart, who was white, they were the ones that pointed it out. That really hurt that child. So I want to bring to the intention of this board the severity of this issue in our district. This is not a way for me to point a finger or to accuse anybody or to blame anybody. I'm here to shed light on something that is very serious. And for our children to be pointing this out, we have to answer. We have to do something about this. I look forward to being a part of that and anything I can do to help. It has also been brought to my attention, my children in the district. And they, there are racial slurs being said to one another on a daily basis, as if it is okay and common. Whether it be heard by administration and staff or not, it is happening, and I want everybody to be aware of that. I don't want any child to be treated differently. I want everybody to be treated the same. That's all I really have to say. And I hope there's room in our budget to bring diversity to our community and to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for privilege of the floor that would like to speak tonight? No? Okay, so, thank you very much, just go to you. Subject seven dot one, may I please get a motion to approve the Orange Oldster Bosse's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five administration budget as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Why this isn't working tonight? Uh, subject seven dot two, may I please get a motion to cast one vote each for Michael Vello and Eugenia Jean Esposito to the two open seats on the Orange Oldster Bosse's Cooperative Board as presented? Mike, Ian, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject eight dot one, may I please get a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district budget as presented? Aaron, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot one, may I please get a motion to approve the financial report for March twenty twenty-four as, as presented at this meeting? Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot two, may I please get a motion to approve the property tax report card for submission to the New York State Education Department? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot three, may I please get a motion to amend the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student calendar as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot four, may I please get a motion to execute the agreement with Shaw, Pearlson, and Lambor as presented? Michelle, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot five, may I please get a motion to accept Moody's investor service profile as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot six, may I please get a motion to approve the computer purchase agreement with Orange Oldster Bosse's as presented? Aaron, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot seven, may I please get a motion to approve the summer services contract with Warwick Valley Central School District as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot eight. May I please get a motion for approval of the Washington DC trip and approval for the transfer of funds as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot nine, may I please get a motion to accept the donation from the PTSA as presented? Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot ten, may I please get a motion to approve the Clarkstown Central School District Health Services Contract as presented? Aaron, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot eleven, may I please get a motion to approve the Greenberg Central School District Health Service Contract as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot twelve, may I please get a motion to approve final payment to Whitcom as presented? Aaron, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot thirteen, may I please get a motion to accept auctions international proceeds of sale as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion?